First public board meeting of the Halton District School Board for 2025. I would like to extend a special welcome to our guests, both in person and online. We will start with the roll call. Vice Chair Oliver. Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Trustee Amos.
Good evening, everyone.
Trustee Baxter.
Good evening.
Trustee Bryden.
Good evening.
Trustee Danieli.
Thank you, I am here.
Trustee Gray.
Hello.
Trustee Rocha.
Hello.
Trustee Shuttleworth will be joining us later this evening. Trustee Zheng.
Good evening.
And Trustee Ahmed will also be joining us in a few moments.
Yes, good evening, I'm on my way.
Oh, thank you. Student trustee Ho.
Good evening.
And student trustee Ochu.
Good evening.
Director Ennis, would you please let us know which staff are in attendance?
Thank you, Chair Collard, good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. We have a full slate of senior staff here this evening to support the meeting.
Thank you, and at this time, if you have not yet logged into Creston, please do so now. Tonight, trustee Amos will be honoring the land.
Thank you. "We begin by acknowledging the land and our responsibility to care for and respect all that provides us with life. This land upon which HDSB is situated is on the ancestral treaty entitled lands of the Anishinaabe Wurkibwe Mississauga Nation, now known as the Mississaugas of the Credit. Mississauga Territory in the past and present continues to host both indigenous and non-indigenous peoples. The HDSB is committed to continuous knowledge building with respect to actions that address and resolve the ongoing impacts of colonialism. We do this by learning and understanding the true history, treaty obligations, duties and responsibilities and indigenous rights, while actively maintaining mutually beneficial relationships and collectively respecting and caring for the land."
Thank you, trustee Amos. We are now up to item 1.3, approval of the agenda, and prior to approval, we do have a number of delegations this evening, and so I would like to alter the ratification action section to put the student voices on hate and discrimination. As the first action item, moving the other two items down by one slot each. And this is something that we do usually when we have delegations on a topic, so that the people who are in our gallery can hear the deliberations sooner rather than later. Trustee Gray, would you make a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Yes, I would.
Trustee Rocha, would you like to second this motion?
I would.
Thank you. Are there any objections to approving the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda is approved by unanimous consent. Are there any declarations of possible conflict of interest for this evening's agenda? Seeing none, we are now up to item 2.0, delegations presentations to the board. And the first item on the agenda is 2.2 Inspire Awards, and I will pass the gavel to trustee Gray, one of the co-chairs of the Inspire Awards, to preside over this evening's awards.
Thank you very much. We're very honored tonight to recognize the recipient of an Inspire Award here in person tonight. And that individual is Supriya Data from Boyne Public School. Congratulations, Supriya. Supriya is a compassionate and dedicated educator who creates a lasting impact on her students and their families. Her thoughtful care and individualized attention shine through in every interaction. A parent of one of Supriya's former students shared how Supriya supported their non-verbal son with detailed daily updates. This personalized approach not only helped the family feel connected and supported, but also left a deep impression on the child, who continues to talk about Mrs. Data daily. Congratulations. Chair Collard, I do not have the agenda up here as of yet. Would you be able to read the other recipients of an Inspire Award for the month of November? Thank you.
Thank you so much, trustee Gray. Yes, there is an issue with getting into Gmail from devices this evening. So luckily, I've got it on my phone. We have Alexa Harper from Bruce Trail Public School, Janet Cover from Cedar Ridge Public School, Logan Segworth-West from Iroquois Ridge High School, and Philip Kutchis from New Central Public School.
And congratulations to all these recipients. And for all of those who are watching tonight, please feel free to submit your Inspire Award nominations. We look forward to receiving them on a monthly basis where they are evaluated, and we seek to recognize those who are successful in being awarded this Inspire Award. So thank you so much.
We are now up to the student trustee report. Student trustees Ochu and Ho, please go ahead when you're ready.
Thank you very much. Good evening and Happy New Year, staff superintendents, trustees, and viewers. I'm trustee Ochu.
And I'm trustee Ho.
And together, we're bringing you the student trustee report for the January 8th board meeting.
Before the winter break and even over the holidays, trustee Ochu and I have been hard at work with the Student Senate, the Junior Council, and our Mental Health Task Force. We are ready to start the 2025 year off with a bang.
By Wednesday, December 4th, trustee Ho and I held our third Student Senate meeting themed around the 2024 to 2028 multi-year strategic plan. Director Ennis was present at the meeting and gave our senators an incredible introduction to the six commitments that the multi-year strategic plan outlines and how these commitments affect them. Director Ennis asked the student senators to email them with an act of kindness they committed during that week. Trustee Ho and I are happy to say that the senators had no issue with that request.
After that riveting speech, we moved on to the engagement session on our new multi-year strategic plan, led by our wonderful Student Senate Subcommittee co-chairs. The student senators were asked how they imagined these commitments would be implemented at their schools. And some most common responses we got from them were firstly, to maybe feature more representation of students most commonly affected by specific commitments where needed. So an example of this would be featuring more minority groups in different staff positions for students with the same background to feel more represented in the school system. Secondly, to consult and provide schools with experts who can educate them on subject matters specific to each commitment. So an example would be having more indigenous speakers be able to share their living experiences or marketing, going to different mental health specialists that are available at each school. Thirdly, to create student support systems that de-stigmatize interest or participation in any multi-year strategic plan commitments. So an example would be having Indigenous Culture Days that seek to inform students about the way of life of Indigenous peoples. And fourthly, to educate students in clarifying certain wording in each commitment to help students understand better why it is necessary for the HSB to focus on each commitment. So an example would be, what is the difference between equity and equality?
On Monday, December 9th, trustee Ho and I held our first Junior Council meeting of the school year at this building. Although a bit shorter than Student Senate meetings, trustee Ho and I were able to introduce the Junior Council members, the boardroom, the role of student trustee, and how they can inspire change within their schools. All of this was thanks to Director Ennis, Chair Collard, and Vice Chair Oliver, who all gave the Junior Council, as well as trustee Ho and I, valuable information on the boardroom and the role of a trustee. The first Junior Council meeting was finished with an engagement session similar to the Student Senate meeting, which was also led by the co-chairs of each subcommittee.
On Wednesday, December 18th, trustee Ochu and I met with the manager of Research and Accountability, Rosanna Bishaglia, in order to optimize and create a timeline for the survey we plan to send to secondary school principals about the feasibility and potential impacts of a mental health day in their schools. The consensus of the meeting was that the survey would be presented at the upcoming Family of Schools Meeting to secondary principals, as well as in the Associate Directors' Report the week before.
After the November 13th Student Senate meeting, where Superintendent Shoss led an incredible discussion on technology and artificial intelligence, a student senator by the name of Honia Saffick took the remarkable initiative to conduct a survey at her school, which assessed the students' thoughts on AI. The main points were that AI should assist learning but not replace teachers, as it provides accessible support and helps fill gaps when private tutors aren't available. AI's potential for misuse requires boundaries. Teaching responsible usage and addressing ethical concerns in schools. And overreliance on AI could hinder creativity and critical thinking skills, so students' guidance on using it wisely should be implemented to avoid becoming too dependent. And finally, AI-generated content can be misinterpreted by detection tools, i.e. turnitin, and should be monitored to ensure ethical use.
December 2024 was an extremely productive month for trustee Ochu and I. After the Student Senate and Student Council meetings, respectively, where trustee Ochu and I gathered feedback on the new multi-year strategic plan, we are hard at work with the Mental Health Day and are happy to have gotten a concrete schedule moving forward. Thank you very much for listening.
Are there any questions or comments for our student trustees this evening? Trustee Baxter.
Sorry, thank you so much for that report. A lot of great content in there. I was intrigued by the survey that the website manager conducted. That is quite a feat, and some interesting learning. As always, we like to hear student voice, so definitely, please pass on our appreciation to her for the work she did. I noted the first point, that AI is being used in place of private tutoring. And I would be curious to hear more, if she was able to get any more information or insight from students on that specifically. I don't know if private tutors means one-on-one, or does that mean external to the board? But either way, would be interested to learn more.
Thank you very much. I can definitely get in contact with her to ask her for more clarification on that question. So, yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Seeing no other questions, thank you very much to trustees Ochu and Ho for their presentation on student trustees' report tonight. Our next item is delegations to the board. As per our delegation governance procedure, each delegate shall be allowed up to five minutes to present their delegation. Delegates must refrain from using derogatory language and from making statements that would personally identify individuals, including students, staff, community members, or trustees. Any delegate who fails to adhere to this restriction will be ruled out of order by the chair, and their presentation will be immediately terminated. Our first delegate for this evening is Andrew Sia. And I would like to welcome Andrew to come forward to the presentation desk right here. I will be timing your delegation, and I'll give you a wave when there is one minute remaining. You're allowed up to five minutes for your delegation. Please begin when you're ready by pressing the button at the base of the microphone.
Hi, my name's Andrew Sia. I'm here to ask the board to support recommendations in report number 25005 with amended language. In November, a motion was passed to study antisemitism and here Jewish student perspectives. Tackling antisemitism is essential to creating an inclusive environment, but only by studying anti-Palestinian racism, anti-Arab racism, and Islamophobia can the board both fully contextualize the rise in antisemitism and ensure all students feel safe and welcome at school. Focusing only on antisemitism does a disservice to the whole community, both Jews and non-Jews alike. The board needs to be aware of how reports and statistics around antisemitic incidents are often biased and unreliable. Make no mistake, there has been a rise in antisemitism in Canada, but the available stats about antisemitic incidents, such as those from Bene Brith, are methodologically unreliable and employ a politically motivated definition of antisemitism that encompasses not just hatred and discrimination of Jews, but also criticisms of the state of Israel and legitimate expressions of Palestinian identity. It should be noted that in 2020, Bene Brith Canada found there were 29% more antisemitic incidents in Canada than in the US, despite a Jewish population that is 15 times smaller. I've personally lived in both countries, and I can say definitively that Canadians are not significantly more hateful than Americans. So the only explanation here is that they employed an overly broad definition of antisemitism. Locally, I'm aware that some have labeled everything from the expression "free Palestine" to simply having a Palestinian flag as antisemitic. It's a fact that most Canadian Jews support the state of Israel and are therefore potentially uncomfortable with expressions of Palestinian identity, Palestinian self-determination, or challenges to the state of Israel. But that's a political discomfort, not a form of hate or antisemitism, because the state of Israel is a political entity. No political state is inherent to Judaism as a religion or to the Jewish people. Judaism and Jews have existed for thousands of years, while Zionism is a political movement that began in the late 1800s. Anti-Zionism is not inherently antisemitic. To classify criticism or even hostility towards the political entity of Israel as antisemitic is both inaccurate and trivializes real forms of Jew hatred. I'm gravely concerned that under the November motion, the board will only hear one perspective, a perspective that may suffer the same methodological issues and biases that plague the Bene Brith statistics. If that's the case, Palestinian students will be victimized. No student should be told that wearing their cultural dress is a form of hatred, whether it's a kafiyah or a dashiki, or that having a flag of their homeland is discrimination, whether it's the Palestinian or the Canadian flag. But it's precisely these examples of expressing Palestinian identity that I've heard called antisemitic by some members of the community. Without a full understanding about anti-Palestinian and anti-Arab racism, I fear that in its attempt to address antisemitism, the board will itself engage in discriminatory behavior. And while the effect of that on Palestinian students is more than enough to make adopting the amended recommendations in the report imperative, the potential impact on the Jewish community is also notable. Right now, by treating antisemitism differently from and prioritizing it above other forms of hatred, the board is not only giving Jewish students special treatment, but also potentially endorsing forms of anti-Palestinian racism under the guise of combating antisemitism. This creates an unsafe environment for Jews, where true incidents of Jew hatred may go unaddressed, diluted by complaints about expression of Palestinian identity or political speech critical of the Israeli state, to which the board will be forced to devote its attention. It also fails to protect other community members, who undoubtedly face forms of racism and hatred, which, if this motion is to fail, the board will not seek to understand with the same depth. Schools should be safe for all children, regardless of religion or ethnicity. This includes Jewish students, and it includes Palestinian and Arabs and Muslim students. My kids are personally proud to express their Judaism, but I never want them to come home from school and ask why they're allowed to wear a kippah, but their friends can't wear a kafiyah. I don't want to have to explain to them that to keep them safe at school, the board thinks other students have to hide their cultural identity. Every incident of hate in school is a tragedy, and the board needs to understand and address them all, including anti-Palestinian racism, not just those targeted at people like me.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for delegate Andrew Sia this evening? Trustee Rocha.
Yeah, through the chair, thank you for your delegation. At the beginning of your delegation, you mentioned you wanted the motion in the report to be amended, to add some groups. Could you just remind me what those groups are? I want to make sure that I've captured them in my notes.
Certainly. It's my understanding that there was talk of adding an amendment to the motion to include explicitly anti-Palestinian, anti-Arab racism, and Islamophobia.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Ahmed.
Yeah, thank you so much, and very insightful. I really want to thank you for taking your time to come here and delegate. Thank you.
There are no other questions at this time. I wish to thank you very much for your very well-thought-out approach to your delegation this evening. Very much appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next delegate this evening is Lara Alomari. Welcome, Lara. I hope I'm saying your name properly. Lara, okay. I'll be timing your delegation, and I will give you a wave when there is one minute remaining. You're allowed up to five minutes for your delegation. Please begin when you're ready.
Good evening, trustees. Good evening, board members. I'm Lara Alomari, with one child in HDSB and another who graduated from HDSB. Pending the results of this report, I do want to know how you pledged to commit your budgetary response to deal with ongoing issues confronting the safety and well-being of our students in Halton Schools. It's not enough to detect or identify bias, discrimination, and racism in vague terms, and think, oh, there's racism, we must stop it. It's also not sufficient to ignore acknowledgement of the imminent threat to students, be they Palestinian, Arab, Christian, Muslim, or Jewish students. For the tools to address hate and discrimination, I do ask that anti-Palestinian racism be distinctly recognized as a form of anti-Arab racism. And quoting the Arab-Canadian lawyers, this silences, excludes, erases stereotypes, defames, or dehumanizes Palestinians or their narratives. We need the tools and procedures to be aligned to combat hate in all its facets. Schools are safe environments, till they're not. Telekafiah is intentionally referred to as a scarf, and Palestine is not on the map the teacher is displaying. So let me start by just unpacking this single tool that we've been asking for, namely the APR mandatory training for every single staff member of HDSB, which will require a budget approved specifically for this purpose. In a previous meeting with the HDSB, we were told that there is no budget allocation for APR. And I asked them, you know, like, where do other districts get the budget for this same kind of training? Namely, WHDSB. Lack of training on APR is a risk to the well-being of our children, as the long-lasting effects of feeling canceled, isolated, and ignored are detrimental to the well-being of a child. Not only would we have deprived him or her of their rights, but we've silenced them. The only way to combat hate is through awareness and education. How is a teacher, who is confined to one sphere of the world, where media is controlled and coverage is minimal, recognize and understand these issues? It is your moral obligation, as it is mine, and that's why I'm here, that no child is canceled. The only path forward is to mandate APR training, so no child gets to hear. And these are incidents that I got firsthand from people in my community. No child needs to hear that Palestine is not a country, that you can't hate Israel, that you look like you're PLO, or have a teacher come into the classroom to check on one child, but not the other. Palestine is not relevant for you to write it on your Terry Fox sticker. These are real incidents that happened, two of which with my daughter, and the rest from friends in the community. I'm going to ask you here to dig deep into your provincial pockets, I don't know how deep the pockets are, of the Ministry of Education, to find the budget to support your goal for creating safe and caring places of learning for all students through strategic training on APR for all staff members. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Lara? Trustee Ahmed.
Thank you again for coming and giving us your time. And I'm really sorry about what your child went through. No child should feel unsafe in our schools, and we should take swift action to counter that.
Thank you.
And we promise that.
And trustee Rocha?
Through you, Chair, to the delegate. So, listening to your delegation this evening, I heard you asking for APR training.
Mandatory training to all staff, yes.
That's not part of this motion here. That's the topic for this evening. So, in reading the motion as it's written this evening, are there any specific changes you would like to make to the motion that's going to appear before us this evening?
Definitely, as the gentleman before me said, definitely, you know, like, we need to align both, or if not all kinds of hate, you know, like, as a board. But as I said at the start, pending the results of this report is where the next step would be, is to mandate APR training for teachers.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much for your delegation this evening. As with the previous speaker, you spoke extremely well, very eloquently. And I just want to let everyone know that we, as trustees, will be debating this item after the delegations, which is why you're not hearing very many questions right now. Right now, we're only asking questions of the delegate, but when we get to the actual item, we can ask questions of staff. And so that will answer some of the questions that you're asking in your delegations. Our next delegate this evening is Rishma Mangat. Welcome, Rishma. I'll be timing your delegation, and I'll give you a wave when there is one minute remaining. You're allowed up to five minutes for your delegation. The button is right in front of the microphone, and you only have to press it once. Please begin when you're ready.
Thank you, and please feel free to wave extra wide. If I'm so engrossed in my words, I don't see you. Good evening, everybody. Last night, there was a session held in Milton that focused on how to recognize, report, and respond to cases of anti-Palestinian racism. There was representation on both the superintendent and trustee side there, which was really nice to see. At this meeting, a trustee from the Hamilton Wentworth District School Board spoke about what she has heard from students, both at that board and within the HDSB, around their experiences of anti-Palestinian racism. So everything from being told they can't wear the kafiyah, to being told they can't fundraise for Gaza, they can't say the word Palestine, they can't even say the word genocide. She then asked the question, why would an education system want to cover and censor a conversation about genocide? And it is genocide, by the way. I think those who are still debating the validity of this term are far removed from where global humanitarian and legal consensus has been for quite some time now. In her response, she talked about how when we think about education, we often think about it as a neutral site of knowledge dissemination. The curriculum, the methodologies are all neutral, they're objective. But that isn't the case. They are informed and mired, as she said, by a particular ideology, an ideology that prioritizes white supremacy, that prioritizes Eurocentric education. And I'm going to pause here and ask everybody to just check in with themselves. And I'm going to pause here and ask everybody to just check in with themselves and reflect on what they're feeling as I say that. Western, Canadian, Ontarian, Halton curriculum prioritizes white supremacy by default. And it is only through constant advocacy that racialized groups bring about positive change. If you're racialized, that's probably not news to you. If you're not racialized, I would take this opportunity to reflect on how this being knowledge might impact the tendency one might have to support one motion and maybe be a little bit more hesitant to maybe support another. I watched the trustee meeting back from November 5th several times now. And when Report 24131 was discussed, there was the idea to bring in other forms of hatred to make it more inclusive. And that was not taken, which was surprising because I thought if we're talking about hate and discrimination, it should include all groups. But now we have this Report 25005. And I just want to read the intro paragraphs to both to compare. So Student Voices on Anti-Semitism. "Board Conduct Research to Seek Insights from Self-Identified Jewish HDSB Students Regarding Their Experience of Anti-Semitism on HDSB Properties, as well as Their Feedback on the Effectiveness of the HDSB Response and Existing Tools to Address Hate and Discrimination." 25005, Student Voices on Hate and Discrimination. That's pretty broad. Which form? "The Board Conduct Research to Seek Insights from All HDSB Students Regarding Their Experiences of Hate and Discrimination at School, as well as Their Feedback on the Effectiveness of the Application of Existing Tools to Address Hate and Discrimination in School." So this, for me, is a perfect example of not just anti-Palestinian racism, but the way that white supremacy is prioritized in schools. Because I read this and I reflect on the conversations that we've had as a community for well over a year with the board now. And one of the things we kept hearing as part of the Zionist, excuse me, one of the reasons we're given is that we can't create an exception for one group of people. We can't treat one group of people exceptionally. And that's why we can't have a lot of the demands we're asking for. But if that's the case, what do you call the difference in discrepancy in just the intro paragraph of these two motions? So what does all that mean for the trustees sitting here today? Hopefully, you understand the need to amend the motion, as has been asked already a couple of times. And you may have already received as trustees or will be receiving soon some additional detail around what the amendments are that are being suggested. And then the expectation is, just like it was passed unanimously in November, we expect that the amended motion here will also pass unanimously. If not, I invite people to go and reflect again on some of those internal biases we have. And I would also lastly just like to ask trustees here to take a page and some inspiration from the students that they are supposed to be representing. And you've seen over the last year plus, some really remarkable students speak out. And, you know, they spoke out on one of the most critical social justice issues of our time. They see the connections between the ideologies that the board claims to uphold and protect and defend in their multi-year plan. And they also see the hypocrisy of the board if they're not allowed to do some of those things, and they're not allowed to speak, and they're being silenced. So yeah, that's all I have. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Rishma. Are there any questions for Rishma regarding her delegation?
Thank you.
Trustee Rocha?
Yep, through you chair to the delegate. Thank you for your delegation. Sorry, you made reference to a proposed amendment. Do you have a proposed amendment?
There is an amendment that has been circulated, and I'm not sure if trustees have it already or will be having it shortly. But there is an amendment to include further to some of the questions that have already been asked to make this current motion more specific to anti-Palestinian racism. And not just have it be broadly on hate and discrimination, which the board kind of covers off anyway through its equity policies.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Leading no further speakers. Thank you very much. Again, Rishma, you spoke as eloquently as the ones before you, and we appreciate your sentiments. Thank you. Our next delegate is Mayasa Kitmoto. And I hope I said that right. Welcome. I will be timing your delegation and I'll give you a wave when there is one minute remaining. You are allowed up to five minutes for your delegation. Please begin when you're ready.
Okay, so it's Mesa. Good evening trustees and board members. My name is Mesa and I am here today not just as a proud mother of two, as a proud mother of two remarkable Palestinian students at the HDSB. I address you today from a place of profound concern for the well-being, safety, and mental health of my children and all Palestinian children within the HDSB. I have engaged in heartfelt conversations with many students and families within our Halton Palestinian community. We lean on one another and connection, fostering connections and support. And it is with this connection that I must convey a crucial message. Sorry, this is kind of cutting off. Okay. Must convey a crucial message that your Palestinian students at the HDSB are not okay. It pains me to share that my children, like many other Palestinian children in the school system, as well as allies, feel fearful to speak up about Palestinian human rights because they are faced with relentless anti-Palestinian racism. And this is not a matter of isolated incidents. It is a common struggle that has persisted throughout their educational journey. As a mother, I wrestle with a lot of emotions, worry, frustration, and even fear. Fear for the mental health and safety of my children. My son has been subjected to hurtful slurs. He's been called terrorist and many times has been urged to suppress his identity because Palestine is not recognized by the West. He has been confronted with questions that undermine our humanity, our lived experiences, and history. One question he's usually asked is, why should we feel sympathy for Palestinians when they're part of the terrorist problem? There's also a troubling moment that I must share when a racist comment was made in a classroom to my son about Palestine and his identity. The teacher heard, smiled knowingly, and continued the lesson as if nothing had happened and nothing was said. Experiences like this may seem minor to some, but they cast long shadows on my son and our family. Like many Palestinian students, my kids feel marginalized as if their lived experiences are invisible because they dare to embrace their Palestinian identity. The fallout of APR extends far beyond mere words. It cultivates an environment of fear, exclusion, and isolation for our Palestinian students. Many are profoundly affected by the ongoing genocide in Gaza, witnessing the suffering of their people, families, and friends on a daily basis. The trauma they endure follows them into the classroom as they grapple with the painful reality of their loved ones being targeted back home. They wear brave faces, but when they arrive at school, they have little to no support and therefore they go unheard. Some educators even perpetuate the cycle of pain through racist remarks, pushing our children further into silence to avoid further humiliation and dehumanization. Recently, we have witnessed a troubling surge in incidents where Palestinian students feel unsafe and unfairly discriminated against, from being labeled as terrorists to being told you started the war or told that Palestinians don't exist. They are denied their fundamental rights to express their thoughts and experiences concerning the genocide and ethnic cleansing against the Palestinians. Sorry, I'm... Today, I stand before you with a call to action to prioritize the mental health and well-being of our students, our Palestinian children. I ask that you amend this motion to specifically address anti-Palestinian racism, anti-Arab racism, and Islamophobia. By focusing on this critical issue, you will create an environment where Palestinian students feel safe to speak out and share their experiences. It will also foster trust among students and us parents, but it will also demonstrate that their voices will be heard and valued. It will also shed light to the challenges Palestinian students face and highlight the gaps that demand our urgent attention. Thank you.
Thank you Mesa. Are there any questions for our delegate? Seeing none, thank you very much for your eloquence and for your personal stories. It's very, very sad to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our final delegate for this evening is Yusuf Jamus. Welcome Yusuf. As I stated, now if this is my fifth time, I'll be timing your delegation and I will give you a wave when there is one minute remaining. You are allowed up to five minutes for your delegation. Please begin when you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Yusuf and I'm a proud Palestinian Canadian and a parent of children attending HDSB schools. I am deeply invested in ensuring that all students, regardless of their background, are treated with dignity, respect, and equity. I stand here tonight deeply concerned about the Report 25005 presented to this board on its current form, where I see it as a clear manifestation of anti-Palestinian racism or APR. Let me start by pointing out the stark double standards on display. Compare today's report titled "Student Voices on Hate and Discrimination" to Report 24131, presented on November 5th, 2024, titled "Student Voices on Anti-Semitism." The language speaks volumes. One report was specific and unapologetic in naming antisemitism, while today's motion is vague, generic, and evasive. This sends a clear message to families of certain identities are worth naming and protecting while others are ignored, silenced, or erased. This reminds me of Duncan Campbell Scott, a man who spoke about equity while implementing policies to erase indigenous cultures. Is this the legacy you want to emulate? Look further at the recommendations in today's report. It calls the board to seek insight from all HDSB students regarding their experiences of hate and discrimination. Now let's compare this to the November 5th report, which called for research specifically on experiences of Jewish students facing antisemitism. Why the change in approach? Why does the Palestinian community and their allies not deserve the same focused attention? This is another blunt example of APR, of suppressing Palestinian voices and erasing their identity. Then there is the analysis section of today's report, which curiously mentions antisemitism yet again, even though it was addressed in its own report and motion last November. Why the repeated emphasis on one form of racism while others, like APR, remain sidelined? What message does this send? That some forms of hate are more important than others? That some communities deserve protection while others are expendable? The Palestinian community and their allies have reached out to this board repeatedly. They have engaged with the director, with the staff, and trustees. They have shared their concerns about APR in HDSB schools. And yet, this report does not reflect their voices. Instead, it prioritizes the silencing of Palestinians and their allies. Let's look at another angle of November 2024 report and motion. A single delegation from parent along meeting with Jewish community led to the swift creation of mesh motion to study antisemitism, despite, to my knowledge, no documented incidents of antisemitism in HDSB schools. Meanwhile, multiple parents have delegated and written to this board about APR. And there is clear evidence of APR in HDSB schools that was reported and circulated on social media. Yet, the board has taken no meaningful action. My ask to HDSB this report to be approved only after being amended to explicitly name APR. It must include Palestinian voices in its creation. Anything less is a clear violation of HDSB's own code of conduct, which claims to promote equity and inclusion. Some trustees might argue, why can't, why can't keep creating, we cannot keep creating motions for each and every type of racism? My response to that is simple. Why didn't you think of that when antisemitism report and motion was brought forward? Why did you rush to address one form of racism while dismissing others, especially APR, which has been repeatedly raised by members of the community? If the board is now questioning the need of focused motions, it exposes the double standards at play and further validates claims of APR. Finally, let me make this absolutely clear. Failure to amend this report, to focus on APR and then pass it unanimously, similar to the antisemitism motion last November, will be undeniable proof of that APR has a home in HDSB. It will send a loud and clear message to the community that human rights in HDSB are only applicable to certain groups while others are left out in the cold. Trustees, the choice is yours. Do you want to be remembered as Duncan Campbell Scotts of our time, spreading injustice and erasing marginalized voices? Or do you want to be remembered as those who stood for equity, inclusion, and justice? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for this delegate? Thank you very much Yusuf.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Carol? You're okay? Okay. So this item will be discussed as soon as we get down to our action items for this evening. But before we get there, we have the consent agenda. So for approval, we have the Halton District School Board minutes from December 3rd. For receipt, we have the outstanding action items, board report schedule, policy and governance procedure review schedule, interim operating and capital financial report, and the quarterly capital update. And we have two items of correspondence to the board. I'm going to read the motion. Be it resolved that the HDSB approves the consent agenda and receives the information items for January 7th, 2025. Trustee Zhang, would you make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Trustee Bryden, will you second this motion?
Yes.
And I see that there are people wanting to pull a couple of items. So I will first ask trustee Bryden which item he would like to pull.
3.2.4 Interim Operating and Capital Financial Report.
Okay, and trustee Baxter?
Thank you. The 3.2.2, the board report schedule.
We'll go to the schedule first since it's higher in the consent agenda. Would you go ahead with your question?
Thank you, through the chair. The suspension and expulsion report, I believe, is scheduled to come to board next month. The last report we received was in April of 2024. And it included data related to the suspension code hate or bias-motivated occurrences. And I'm just wondering if that could be included in this report as well? It was, it was an appendix to that report. So I just wanted to confirm that the next one could be similar in including that information. Sorry, that's through the chair to Superintendent Fowler.
Certainly. Thank you. Through the chair to trustee Baxter. Absolutely. On a go-forward basis, that will always be included. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. I just wanted to confirm that today before it comes. And then a further question regarding that. I'm just wondering, is it possible for additional information to be obtained from school principals regarding the identities of the targets of those suspensions? Sorry, not the people who were suspended, but the incidents of hate and bias-motivated occurrences. Could the identities of the subject of those occurrences be determined? Or could that information be gathered from principals and included in the report as well?
Through you chair to trustee Baxter. It is something we are working on, further coding the actual hate and bias-motivated code. You may recall last year, I spoke about the fact that not everybody used, they were more generic with the code. But it is our hope that through work we're doing currently that we will have additional data that is specific to that. I can't imagine that this year will be as fulsome as maybe, but moving forward, it is something we're looking to gather. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So just as a follow-up, I'm wondering for last, the last report, there were 61 suspensions that were coded that way. And then I don't know how many will be in the report that you're bringing. But is it possible that that information could be obtained from the principals of those schools and included? I'm just, it's sort of thematic with what we've been talking about tonight and will again in terms of understanding what's happening in schools.
If I, if I, if I may, I, I, if I understand your question correctly, trustee Baxter, the identity of the victim, if you will, of the hate and discrimination, I'm not sure that we have a structure in place that currently identifies those and capture it. So that would be something that we would have to further explore and work toward, work towards.
Sorry. For clarity, through the chair to the director, when a student is suspended, thankfully, as a parent, I haven't had this happen, but I, I was under the impression that there's a report that's provided or a report that's written by the principal that explains what happened. So if the principal has identified that there was hate or bias motivation to the incident, would the information about what type of hate or bias not have been included in that report?
So the type of hate or bias is something that we're working on and seeking clarity on. The identity of the individuals is a different matter.
Sorry, that's my mistake. I worded that incorrectly. So I didn't, I didn't mean the identity. I meant the, yeah, so the type, so, so if we're talking about hate, let's say antisemitism or anti-black racism. I assume that when the principal wrote the report for that incident, it would have been included. And therefore, I'm just wondering if that could be obtained and then included so that we have a breakdown of what types of hate students were suspended for?
That is what we're working towards, and that's what we, we are hoping to have greater clarity and more information, more accurate information to that, to your exact point.
So could that be included in the report next month? Or could a delay to delivering that report by a month allow the time to gather that information and then include it?
So we spoke last year about developing a mechanism through which we would be able to collect that data. So the mechanism was not in place last year, and therefore, we're not able to provide that data for last year. It is our hope that on a go-forward basis, we would be able to potentially share that data through the mechanism that we're creating.
Sorry, not to belabor the point, but the information exists, correct? Like the, a principal who has suspended a student, they know why. And I'm just wondering, could that information be gathered? I, I realize that there is a digital tool being created. I'm just wondering if there's another way to gather that information and then include it in the report that comes so we can answer some of the questions that were being asked by the public about what types of hate and bias we're seeing in our schools.
So the report that you refer to is a suspension letter. That is what's recorded, and that's the data that I have access to. If that suspension letter says hate and/or bias motivated occurrence, and that's all it says, then I am unable to determine what form of racism it was.
Okay, and trustee Bryden, your question?
Thank you. In regard to the first quarter results, the, the report notes that we are at 21.4% of the revised budget after the first quarter, which is below 25, but still a percentage point above where we were last year at this time. So I would ask the superintendent to help us understand whether this variation is strictly driven by the timing of retroactive payments, which are referred to in the report, or to what extent it represents an expenditure path that might bring us in over budget for the end of the year. Superintendent Nagui?
Good evening, trustees. And through the chair to trustee Bryden. At this point in time, it's only one quarter into the year, so it's a little bit early to assess how we will be ending the year. However, preliminary analysis suggests that we are well within the threshold we should be in. Most of our expenses at this point in time would be, expected to be around 25%. With the exception of some of the groups, if we refer to Appendix C, some of the groups of our staff are paid over a 10-month period, such as the educational assistants, early childhood educators, and the professionals and paraprofessional group. So for that group, those groups in particular, we would expect that the expenses up to this point, three, three months out of the 10, would be around 30%. What I wanted to bring out, because trustee Bryden has an excellent question. There were retropayments for labor agreements that date back to 2019. So there's about five years of retropayments for all employee groups at different points in time. And so we cannot really compare last year to this year. If we look at 2023, 2024 expenses as of November 30, they will be quite lower in percentage and dollar value than the current year. And the reason is, as of September of 2023, we would have, we would have reversed the accruals for retropayments for labor agreements until such time that the labor agreements ratified later in the year and were paid in, in later quarters. So then the, the percentages caught up through the year. Whereas for the first quarter in 2024, for the first, this current year, we had a lot of the, a lot of the retropayments for the current term, all except for the principal and vice-principal group, which straddled into December. So that wouldn't be captured in this report. So it's difficult to compare year over year without having that analysis. However, if we account for the retropayment, the fact that some groups had one less payment period in this year compared to last year, that, that includes the principal, vice principals, which will see a much lower percentage, and not all the retropayments occurred for this group by the end of November, as well as looking at some of the one-time payments and investments we've made in IT and computers, which were made upfront in the year, but they were well within budget. If we take those away, we are where we expect to be at this point in the year. So, but there's nothing to suggest that we're going to be over budget. I am not concerned about being 1% over last year because not all expenses are incurred gradually through the year as we would have expected them to be. So at this point, there is no concern that we will be going over budget. We will be keeping an eye on where we are. After the second quarter, we'll have more of a, an idea as to how the year is progressing, and we'll be able to provide more details in that report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great question and great answer. Okay, I'm going to call a five-minute recess at this time, and when we come back, we will be tackling our action items. Oh, my goodness, we didn't have. Thank you. Are there any objections to approving the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved by unanimous consent, and we will now take our five-minute break.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to take that brief break. We are now up to Section 4, Items for Ratification Action. And we have our first action item for this evening. Student Voices on Hate and Discrimination, Report 25005, submitted by Vice Chair Oliver, Trustee Ahmed, and Trustee Amos. Be it resolved that the board conduct research to seek insights from all HDSP students regarding their experiences of hate and discrimination at school, as well as their feedback on the effectiveness of the application of existing tools to address hate and discrimination in school, and that a report summarizing the results be presented to the board in May 2025. Vice Chair Oliver, would you move this motion?
I move this motion?
Trustee Ahmed, will you second this motion?
I do second it.
As the mover, trustee Oliver, would you like to speak to this report?
Yes, thank you. Through you, chair, to my fellow trustees. Since I became a trustee, and I'm sure long before that, HDSP has been committed to equity and inclusion and protection of human rights. In fact, this is once again a commitment in our new multi-year strategic plan, and so is kindness, connection, and community. I know that the work to support these commitments has been ongoing at every level of this organization, and this work, I believe, will continue with relentless dedication. There is no lack of inspiration, compassion, or empathy in our school board. I am pleased to bring forward this report in motion, along with trustees Ahmed and Amos. There's a lot of divisiveness in our society. There's also conflict and intolerance in every part of the world, each publicized to a different extent, affecting different segments of the global population. All of this is clearly visible to the most vulnerable members of our society, our children. And sadly, often these global conflicts and actions spill into our schools and often influence behaviors within our school communities, affecting students and staff alike. Anti-Palestinian racism and antisemitism has heightened due to the war in the Middle East. These are certainly in the spotlight presently. As the mover, trustee Oliver, would you like to speak to this report?
Yes, thank you. Through your chair, to my fellow trustees, since I became a trustee, and I'm sure long before that, HDSP has been committed to equity and inclusion and protection of human rights. In fact, this is once again a commitment in our new multi-year strategic plan, and so is kindness, connection, and community. I know that the work to support these commitments has been ongoing at every level of this organization, and this work, I believe, will continue with relentless dedication. There is no lack of inspiration, compassion, or empathy in our school board. I am pleased to bring forward this report in motion, along with trustees Ahmed and Amos. There's a lot of divisiveness in our society. There's also conflict and intolerance in every part of the world, each publicized to a different extent, affecting different segments of the global population. All of this is clearly visible to the most vulnerable members of our society, our children. And sadly, often these global conflicts and actions spill into our schools and often influence behaviors within our school communities, affecting students and staff alike. Anti-Palestinian racism and anti-Semitism has heightened due to the war in the Middle East. These are certainly in the spotlight presently. And there are many other forms of pervasive hatred and discrimination in our society, such as sexism and misogyny, anti-black racism, homophobia and transphobia, ageism, xenophobia, among others. These are also of concern. They exist, and they affect our students. In 2021, staff conducted a study around anti-black racism at HDSP. In November, we approved a motion around conducting research around experience of anti-Semitism on HDSP properties. These have laid solid groundwork for research into hate and discrimination as experienced by our students. Every student matters. And so in the spirit of the two multi-year strategic plan commitments I've listed earlier, and given the diversity of students and staff in our schools, we must explore all forms of hatred and discrimination being experienced by our students and how they manifest in our schools. Ignoring certain forms of hate and discrimination can send the message that they are acceptable or not as important. It is important to address all forms of hatred and discrimination, as they undermine mutual respect, compassion, unity, inclusion, and general goodwill to all. Chair, I would like to make two amendments to this motion.
Please, go ahead.
Okay. The first is I would like to change the timeline. In my consultation with staff, I have, I believe that a report in June is more feasible and will allow more time for the research department for this critical study. It is absolutely my belief that the study methodology will address all forms of hate and discrimination, including specifically APR, giving it the same level as anti-Semitism study, and I appreciate this is of concern to the members of the Palestinian community. The second amendment is that, in the motion itself, I would like to add all to the, let me just find the wording here.
You are adding clues?
Yeah. Experiences of hate and discrimination at school, including anti-Palestinian racism, anti-Arab racism, and Islamophobia. And I so move.
Is there a secondor for this motion? Trustee Ahmed?
I'll second.
Okay. We now have an amendment on the floor. Are there speakers to the amendment? Trustee Shuttleworth, are you speaking to the motion?
Yes, I have a question. Yep. I'm sorry, I hope you can hear me, I'm in the car, I'm on my way. So Vice Chair Oliver, I'm just wondering, with the amendment that you made, the second amendment that you made, why have you only chosen three areas to highlight versus leaving it as that blanket statement of looking at hate across the board?
Okay, so through your chair, certainly, the plan is that this study will look at all forms of hate and discrimination. And as I said, I believe we, the previous two studies have laid the groundwork in terms of methodology to be able to specifically address each form of hate discrimination, and that will be also specific to anti-Palestinian racism, anti-Arab racism, and Islamophobia.
So can I follow up? So I'm just concerned that by doing that, we still are neglecting all the other forms of ra, you know, one of the concerns, so I came in for the last delegation, and one of the things was that we are focusing specifically on certain types of hate, rather than a blanket of all types of hate. I'm just trying to wrap my head around the rationale behind focusing in when this motion in its sort of beginning was about the idea that we are wanting to ensure that we are not excluding any forms of hate. So I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out why, in this amendment that you've made, we seem to now focus specifically on anti-Palestinian, anti-Islamophobia, and I'm sorry, I can't remember the last one.
Through your chair, to trustee Shuttleworth, I do not believe that any of the other forms of hatred or discrimination will be omitted or not addressed. I believe that our research department is very capable in building their methodology to address every form of hate and discrimination in their, and how they address the students and the kind of information that they seek to attain from, from the students. So I don't think this is doing any disservice. I fully believe that we will be looking at hate and discrimination, period, across the board. Every student's voice will be heard. Every student will be able to express what type of hate and discrimination they experience and how it manifests in our school environment. And I would refer you to the body of the report, and if you could recall my preamble, as I, for me, the impetus is, you know, I want every student to feel safe in our school, and I don't want any student to feel that they're discriminated for any reason. Thank you.
Okay, I've asked Dr. Bashaglia, our research department lead, to come forward and address whether or not she believes she can conduct this research and specifically target the different areas so that all students are equally represented in the surveys and in the report.
Thank you very much. Through your chair, I think as Vice Chair Oliver has mentioned, including anti-Palestinian, Islamophobia, and anti-Arab specifically in the motion, does not limit the outreach to every community. We do represent every student in HDSP. I think including it really solidifies the motion in that it's in response to current geographical realities. The motion begins with those three words. The research department supports the entire multi-strategic plan. We collaborate closely with the Human Rights and Equity Department and the Indigenous Education Department. So I will take back this motion to those colleagues, and we will look at a methodology that will be inclusive, notwithstanding that we, you know, deviate from the original motion that was given to us in November, but certainly we will prioritize the anti-Palestinian, Islamophobia, and anti-Arab as well in the research.
Thank you for that response. Trustee Shuttleworth, did you have a follow-up?
I'll leave it for now, I'm just, I'll leave it for now, thank you.
Trustee Zhang.
Thank you, Chair. So now I see that the report in motion, I believe we need to do this as early as possible this such a study, and because before, when we discussed a lot about the suspension, and so we need the data to support it. So first, if we want to have a mechanism to mitigate or conquer those challenges, then we need to understand what is the situation we have. So, but this report, I will recommend defer and to include several more updates about the expectations and the standards we can have. So one is, in scientific research, any research schema may have two errors, two kind of errors, this is a technical error.
I just want to reflect that we are discussing the amendment to the motion. We're not discussing, we have a motion on the floor regarding making an amendment to the motion. We're not talking about the motion itself. So if you would like to speak to the motion itself and deferring the motion itself, that would belong after we vote on the amendment.
Okay, so for, just for the amendment about to including the three new category, I believe if we, for the data accuracy, so anti-Palestine, Palestine and anti-Arab can have intersection, so how to prevent that for the data accuracy is a question. So maybe we just add one, not add both of them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Amos.
Thank you, through you. I also had similar concerns to trustee Shuttleworth, and may I make a suggestion that after the anti-Palestinian and anti-Arab and, I can't remember the third one, we also say, and the many other forms of, of, of hate and discrimination, or, because I think, when I read the motion as a standalone, you need to make sure that it actually states and that we capture all those other forms. So I think it needs to be up in the part. And while we are highlighting those three, I do think we need to also say, as well as the others.
Let me just reread what the motion would be if it's amended as suggested by the motion to amend. Be it resolved that the board conduct research to seek insights from all HDSP students regarding their experiences of hate and discrimination at school, including anti-Palestinian racism, anti-Arab racism, and Islamophobia, as well as their feedback on the effectiveness of the application of existing tools to address hate and discrimination in school, and that a report summarizing the results be presented to the board in June 2025. The body of the report lists a number of other types of hatred and discrimination, and so they, they are contained within the report and would be included in, in those areas of hate and discrimination. It doesn't need to be specifically stated in the motion that all of the other forms of hate and discrimination are included, because they are in the body of the report. Is that okay?
So can I follow up?
Yes, you can.
Thank you. So in my, my view then, we either, if we put the, the first amendment in, we need to say, as well as all other forms, or we eliminate them all, because if, if we're looking at the body of the report, we already have that information, and I understand wanting to highlight the anti-Palestinian, anti-Arab, but I, I also believe that if we're going to mention some, we need to capture them all.
Okay, so are you making a motion to amend the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, so what I'm, what I'm going to ask is, Vice Chair Oliver, do you accept this as a friendly amendment, to add in, as well as all other forms of hatred and discrimination?
I do, and I have, I have some wording suggestions that maybe will help with that, because the, the impetus for this was to look at all forms of hate and discrimination, and we've outlined many of the key, key that we know. Perhaps if we amend to say, all HDSP students regarding their experiences of all forms of hate and discrimination at school, including, list the three, among others, and then continue on. So it makes it clear that we're looking at all.
Could it be as well as, as well as all others?
Sure. Okay, so as well as all others, and that is acceptable to the mover and the secondor. Okay, thank you. And now we will move on to trustee Ahmed.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. So I am hearing, like, why can't we include anti-Arab and anti-Palestinian racism together? They are distinct. They have some intersectionality, but they are distinct. Palestinians are confined to one region, they are Arabs, but they are Palestinians because they belong to a land. So if we take away their identity, nothing remains. So Palestinians remain Palestinians, Arabs and also remain Arabs. And also, Palestinians are not only Muslims, they are Christians, they are Jews, so Palestinians have to be called Palestinians with a distinct identity.
Thank you for that distinction, trustee Ahmed. Trustee Rocha.
Through you, Chair. I'm having a hard time following what version of the motion we're debating. Would it be possible to write the motion and present it on the board so we can follow what the recommended changes are?
Yeah.
That would be my suggestion, so that we're...
So I will read it out loud so that manager Khan can get the whole thing. So, yeah.
Okay, so that was my, that was my request.
Okay, I'm getting to...
Yeah, no, no, I just want to, oh, you're gonna read it now?
Yeah, we're gonna do it now.
Okay.
Okay, so after school comma, including anti-Palestinian racism, anti-Arab racism, Islamophobia, as well as all other forms of hatred and discrimination. And then the very last word in, or the second last word in the second part of the motion, June instead of May. And if we can get that displayed on the screen, that would be wonderful, thank you. Okay, so this is the amended motion that we are looking to have our debate on. And now let's go back to trustee Rocha, if she has a follow-up question.
So from listening to trustee Amos, and she was one of the authors of the report presented this evening, it's almost like we can go one of two ways. You either amend this report to highlight APR, anti-Arab racism, and Islamophobia, or you can remove that and keep it generic and really encompass the goal of the original report, which is to capture every form of hate and discrimination. One of the delegates this evening talked about, you know, we did a report on anti-black racism, and then we did one on anti-Semitism, and you're right, like, looking back, maybe we shouldn't be doing these ad hoc reports, maybe we should just do one, blanket one, that would encompass everybody. Because you know what, come June, you know what, the 2SLGBTQ community might come and say, well, we want one just for us. So I think maybe let's start the new year fresh, on a clean slate, and put forward a motion that captures everybody, and however anyone identifies, because I think no matter how thorough we think we are going to be by including these names, inevitably we might miss something. We might, we don't even know what we don't know. So I would be of the mind of not including it in the motion, with the understanding that that will be looked at. With that said, I would also look to maybe Dr. Bashaglia with the motion we did pass in November, and... And can we somehow incorporate the motion that we passed in November with this motion that we hope to pass this evening? So instead of having a standalone for antisemitism and this new one here, could we somehow do just one so that there's no one left out and we're not so that there's no one left out?
Yeah, so where that takes me is a question to trustee Baxter regarding the motion already passed on antisemitism. If this motion was to remain in its original form, would you be willing to bring forward a motion to rescind the one that has already been passed on antisemitism so that we can take a broad approach to all forms of hatred and discrimination, not just ones faith-based or politically based? So that there was, nobody will feel that they have been discriminated against by having a broad motion for one and having a specific motion for the other.
Thank you through the chair to the chair. It's a difficult question to answer because we have not heard about the the work that was passed in November. So I'm not quite sure what the plan is for that. And I wonder if we understood that better, if it would be easier to answer that question. In general, I think when we were discussing that motion, trustee Ahmed suggested adding to that motion and we decided not to do that. He mentioned that there was a sharp rise in antisemitism and evidence of rising cases of Islamophobia and anti-Palestinian discrimination. There's nothing in this report that speaks there's nothing in this report that speaks to Islamophobia at all. So I have greater concerns about the report and the motion. And I would agree with trustee Zhang that perhaps we should defer to next month and create a motion as well as a thorough supporting report that honors what we've heard this evening from all of our delegates and their desires and ensure that it's inclusive. I'm concerned that we're making some changes on the fly. But to answer your specific question, as I said, it's a bit difficult to know whether we should rescind the old motion without really knowing what's happening with that motion and what the plan was and whether or not that work could be rolled into a bigger project. I don't really have information to answer that question.
Okay, and I'm going to go to Rosanna Bishaglia again and ask her what the current status is on the antisemitism work and if it would be simpler to have one motion to work with than two.
Thank you very much through your chair. It would be simpler to have one motion as opposed to two motions. I think the work that has taken place to date would not have any bearing on rescinding the motion presented in November and moving forward with a more holistic motion that would support every student as aligned with our multi-year strategic plan.
Okay, so we now have another option ahead of us. Yes, go ahead, Director Ennis.
Thank you so much, Chair caller. I know that we're grappling with the various motions that are before us, the one from November and the one before us tonight, and the various iterations that we are contemplating. I I feel that we should honor the motion that was passed in November. I believe that there are a number of Jewish families and students who are expecting us to do the work that we committed to doing. I also believe that we should also listen to and include specifically what we heard tonight about anti-Palestinian racism, anti-Arab racism and Islamophobia. And so I believe these two things can coexist. So I would not really be in favor of rescinding because or deferring because time is also of the essence. And so if we defer, we're the window to do the work has really collapsed on us. And so I would I would say that we honor the motions that are that's already passed and we are already started to do some work around that. And I say we also do the work that's before us tonight as presented. It does not in any way preclude us from doing work on all forms of racism, which has always been our position. And so I am not fearful that others might come forward because we're doing a number of work on always on an ongoing basis, even those not listed here. So that would be, Dr. Bishaglia?
Yes, sorry, just to clarify, I too would not be in support of deferring. The research department is ready to hit the ground running in February. The antisemitism has been prioritized because as I mentioned, this was a motion that came to us in November. But absolutely, whether it's one motion or two motions come February, we will be hitting the floor running to conduct the focus groups. And having heard the delegates here today, it is clear that there is a need to include anti-Palestinian, Islamophobia and anti-Arab as as issues as well. And so those voices would be gathered as well alongside February.
Thank you for that. So what I'm hearing is that rescinding the motion wouldn't make things any easier and the changes that have been suggested here don't make it more difficult. Okay, back to our speakers list. Trustee Rocha, you had used up all your time. So if you want to ask another question, please go back on the list. And now I have trustee Daniele.
Thank you very much. And it's really just a very quick thing. It's the English majority in me. I wonder if a friendly amendment, if we could look at, oh, the motion just disappeared. It was on the screen. But I I was thinking that it would be a little more elegant if it said including but not limited to, rather than adding the verbiage at the end. That was just going to be my suggestion.
So trustee Daniele's suggestion is that it should say including but not limited to anti-Palestinian racism, anti-Arab racism and Islamophobia. And leaving it at that because to her way of phrasing, that also incorporates all other forms of hatred and discrimination. I'm amenable to either way, but I'm not the mover or the secondor. Is there a preference?
Not really, but yeah, it actually covers everything and I think it should please everyone.
It should be the way it is now?
Yeah, I don't see any problem.
Okay.
Because this catches the spirit of the motion anyway.
Vice Chair Oliver is shaking or nodding her head in agreement with you. So we're we're gonna move forward to the next speaker then if trustee Daniele doesn't have a follow-up.
Point of order, I would just ask if trustee Amos was on board because she is also one of the authors of the report.
Right, trustee Amos, are you all right with keeping the phrasing the way it is or changing it to the way trustee Daniele has suggested?
I appreciate trustee Daniele's input and I really like it. So thank you.
Okay, so what trustee Daniele has suggested is that the change be including but not limited to anti-Palestinian racism, anti-Arab racism and Islamophobia. Instead of including but including APR, AAR, Islamophobia, as well as all other forms of hatred and discrimination. It's much shorter to do it the way trustee Daniele has said and a little bit cleaner. Trustee Amos is accepting that change, but she's not the mover or the secondor. So I need to know if changing it to the way trustee Amos has suggested is acceptable to trustee Ahmed and vice chair Oliver. Yep.
Okay, through your chair. Thank you. I do like that suggestion. The the goal is to look at all forms of hate and discrimination and perhaps that wording should be added. So looking at students regarding their experiences of all forms of hate, discrimination and racism at schools, including but not limited to. I, this is getting kind of clunky wording, right? It's it's getting awkward because we're trying to honor and respect everybody and it's impossible because we're trying to list as well. But I think as that reads right now, I I am okay with that.
And as a secondor to that amendment, are you agreeable to that trustee Ahmed?
Yeah, it does look cleaner, as you said. Yeah, I'm okay with that. Yeah.
Okay. Trustee Daniele, are you all right with the changes that you suggested and the way that they're being worded now?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Now moving on to trust, oh, it's all second time speakers now. Trustee Shuttleworth.
Thank you through your chair. So I think I appreciate what trustee Daniele has given here. My worry or my concern is by singling out the particular areas of hate somewhat similar to what trustee Rocha said is we don't know what's going to happen in the future. But by doing this, I do wonder, just even looking at the delegates, and I only saw the last delegate of this evening, is that it in doing that singling out, it's again creating that divisive nature rather than what I felt was the original spirit of the motion, which was to look at everything. So if we're looking at everything, we're looking at everything. By doing this, we are focusing specifically on anti-Palestinian racism, anti-Arab racism and Islamophobia. So I I just worry if that's all within the body of the motion, which is what you came back to before when I spoke to it before. You said, well, the rest of it's in the body of the motion, but is this not two in the body of the motion?
Not all of them. Anti-Arab racism is not in the body of the motion and I believe Islamophobia is not in the body of the motion. I'm not sure on that. So then if the others are in the body of the motion, could they not all be included in the rather than singling out specifics in here, have them all included of the body of the motion so that again it is seen as we are addressing all hate? Hate is hate is hate regardless of what hate it is focused on. So if we have all of the different pieces of hate within the body, that to me seems more equitable in when we're looking at where that hate is from. Could I just remind the gallery that you're here as spectators at this point? And and if we're hearing noise from the gallery, it makes it more difficult for us to have our debate at the table. So please remember that. Trustee Shuttleworth, in response to to your question, I know you only heard the last delegate. So the major point that was made through the five delegations we had this evening was that we had a motion in November that was specific to antisemitism and that one of their big concerns is the erasure of Palestine. And by not having a motion that specifically identifies Palestine as as a concern for hatred and discrimination, that we are in effect erasing Palestine. And that is not something that anyone at this table wishes to do, which is why we are looking at modifying the motion to include that so that we are treating antisemitism and APR equitably. Is that?
Yeah, I I I understand. I get that. I recognize. I recognize the hurt. I recognize where everybody is coming from in this room. I I just worry of the divisiveness of calling out names. And again, I'm not sure if there's a way to tie the motions to like even in here, mention alongside of whatever the number of the motion that trustee Baxter put forward, just so that you're still seeing that this is looking at everyone. I I just I just worry that by doing this, as trustee Rocha said, in the future, we'll have similar, we had five delegations tonight. And again, I'm so sorry, I was working. I wasn't able to get here to hear all of the delegations, but we want to eliminate all hate in our board. Nobody wants hate. Nobody wants any hate. So by I I don't even know how to explain this, but by singling out, are we not creating more? That's just my concern.
I'm sorry, I have to ask again, the gallery, please remain quiet. Thank you. Okay, trustee Shuttleworth, you have gone over your time. So you've made your point, I think. Trustee Zhang.
Oh, thank you, Chair. My concern about the adding the three is only the wording. So the wording, because we have added anti-APR and anti-Arab racism and Islamophobia. As you heard, I'm consistent before. As before, I said many times, for my personal, I don't never use any word like phobia. Because I believe this word is very politicalized. And now for this study, actually, we are surveying the students. They are children. And for children, we should have more neutral words and just let them know this is a this is a discrimination if there's anything anti-Palestinian or anti-Arab. So these things we need to address, not we should not use any words. Those words will plant a seed for future hate. So we we don't want to see any any community that divide, division and the community, we have a polarization. So we need a harmony community. So for those words, so I just want to use those words, consider change the wording. So I would say just to use the discrimination targeting the Palestinian, Arab and and Muslim community. So these words should be more suitable for this like surveying the students not because they are not adult. A lot of students, they don't understand what it is. So we need to explain that. Thank you.
I'm going to ask you again, Dr. Bishaglia. Would the phrasing that you use in your in your conversations and surveys with students be age appropriate?
Thank you for the question through your chair. Just to clarify, the methodology would be focus groups, which would be conversations. And in line and keeping with the methodology that we used for the Student Voice on Anti-Black Racism, it would be secondary students. So this would be grade nine and above. My understanding of working with students is that they're quite aware of the social justice, political situations, the global situations. So for communities who face racism and discrimination, those terms would not be new. They would actually appreciate the fact that you know, HDSB is using terms that captures their experiences. And these are terms that are out in social media. These are not terms that we are coming up. These are legal terms. These are terms that are accepted by the Human Rights Code. So we would be in keeping with those terms.
Thank you very much for that. Moving on to our next speaker, trustee Bryden.
Thank you. My question is in regards to the second part of the amendment, which is setting the time for this report. When we passed the motion in November, we moved to an April delivery for that report, which was an ambitious ask of the research department at the time. With a much broader scope in this report, my first question is is June actually feasible? And yeah, we'll start there.
Through your chair, no doubt, this is a large request and a large volume of of information that we'll be gathering. We have a methodology in mind that will help us to be quite efficient with our time. And again, we'll be using the methodology that we use for the Student Voice report, so we're not reinventing the wheel. And we're ready to go as of February.
Is there a follow-up?
There is, um. Now, I'll pause for now.
Thank you, uh, trustee Baxter.
Thank you, uh, through the chair. I just, um, in terms of the, the amendment, I'm reading the original motion again, which when I saw it in our package, um, I immediately sent an email to the authors to express my support for it. As I expressed support for, for broader work in November as well. I think in modifying the motion, we might be sort of forgetting what the purpose was. And it's to hear from all students about any hate or discrimination they have experienced. So I don't think, and I don't want to speak for Dr. Bishaglia, but I would imagine the way that the design is, is set up is students will be encouraged to share all information and all experiences that they have had and how they've interpreted those. And I, I believe that if there's any student who's interpreting experience as hate or discrimination against themselves, that they will be given the opportunity to do that and we will hear about it. So I'm not really clear on why we're adding specific types of hate and discrimination to the motion itself. The motion is intended to provide staff with direction, and I think the original motion does that. The, the body and, and the report um, is certainly missing things, as I mentioned before. Trustee um, Ahmed talked about Islamophobia in November, but it was missing from the report now. I don't really know and might look to um, manager Khan. If we adopt a motion and there's things that we wished we had included in the report or in the analysis, I'm not sure if that really matters. It's really about the direction that's being provided to staff, and I think that the spirit of that is maintained in the original motion. That we are expecting and asking staff to seek insight from all students about any hate or discrimination that they have perceived against themselves in our schools, as well as their feedback on the effectiveness of any mitigation. So I'm not, I'm not sure that we need um, to amend. And I understand those who have expressed concern about other groups perhaps feeling that they have been forgotten. I know um, in the fall of 2023, I attended a presentation by the Halton Police who shared with us the data they had for our region. And there had been a dramatic increase in antisemitic hate incidents and very closely followed by a dramatic increase in anti-black racism. Um, in our schools, some of the schools where we were hearing about antisemitism, um, we also heard from parents in those schools concerned about absenteeism on June 1st in 2023. So we were hearing about homophobia. So I'm, I'm just concerned, as I think uh, trustee Shuttleworth has pointed out, we don't, we don't want to miss anybody by putting too much into a motion that I think was well written to start with. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Baxter. Um, moving on to student trustee Ochu.
Thank, thank you through you, Chair. Um, I have to agree with um, trustee Baxter and trustee Shuttleworth on how the original motion, I believe, encompassed all forms of hate. And I can speak for experience at um, the schools that I've been at. When a specific group is highlighted in, ye- yes, exactly, when a specific group is highlighted in um, a motion to like protect them, it makes it worse according to the students because they feel that that group has a higher sort of advantage and leverage on them because they are being actively protected by a school board. While the students that aren't being mentioned in the motion feels, feel like they aren't being supported directly. I definitely understand why this amendment proposition was made. But I feel that by including these specific groups, it may not include other groups that are also affected by hate.
Thank you, and moving to trustee Ahmed.
Thank you, Chair, through you. So I'm hearing that uh, it is divisive to mention APR and anti Arab racism and Islamophobia. And uh, but we are still okay with the motion that we passed in, in November. That's why I mentioned, when we were debating the motion on antisemitism, I mentioned that let's include APR, Islamophobia and all kinds of hate in that motion so that we don't end up in this situation. But I was told that let's not dilute the spirit of the motion. So now you're sitting here debating why we are mentioning antisem, anti Palestinian racism, why we are mentioning anti Arab racism, why we are mentioning Islamophobia, it's going to create divisions. So what happened to the, the motion passed in November? Why?
Please remain quiet in the gallery.
And also, Director Ennis has already confirmed that the staff is in a position to support all kinds of motions, even if a separate group brings another motion, another delegation uh, to, to have another study. The staff is in a position to, to support another study and they're not shying away from their responsibilities. So I think in all fairness, we include anti Palestinian racism, anti Arab racism, Islamophobia and pass this motion and show that we are not inherently racist. Because whatever we want to do, our actions will speak louder than our words. Whatever we do, our actions are going to be on record, they're going to speak louder than anything else.
Thank you, trustee Ahmed. And our final speaker, trustee Rocha.
Uh, through you, Chair. Um, I'm going to address something trustee Ahmed just said in that we're, we're looking at diluting the motion. I, I don't think we are, I think what happened in November, it was focused on one group. It was focused on antisemitism. I think the original report that you authored this evening, you put forth as well with trustee Oliver and trustee Amos, a, a motion that would encapsulate everybody, including anti Palestinian racism, anti Arab racism, Islamophobia, anti black racism and all the other racisms in there. So I think when I first read the report as part of my package, I looked at and I go, yes, this is an inclusive motion. And we're going to get away from what one of the delegates said is creating these reports every month because a topic came up that's difficult and we need to address it. So I think the motion that you presented this evening that was generic and that captures every single student, no matter who they are, puts us in a position that we're not going to come back here in a few months uh, because we missed something. And now, the other thing I want to point out is by including the words that are bolded, it doesn't change the scope of the research. Every single sixty thousand plus student will be impacted, whether we put those words in there or not. And I think to what student trustee um, Ochu said, when we start in, and trustee Shuttleworth is, when we start pointing out specific groups, we do cause divisiveness and we see that because we're guilty of it, because here we are, we're being called out for being divisive. So I think in the original spirit of the motion that was put forth for inclusivity and all forms of hate and discrimination, my preference would be to not include the words that are bolded. But at the end of the day, those groups will be um, included in, in this report. So um, I, I'm going to support this regardless because the intent is to do a study on all forms of hate and discrimination. I'm going to support it. My preference would be to remove the words that, from including to Islamophobia, my preference would be to remove them so that we stop the divide right now and we move forward in a very inclusive fashion.
Okay, I see two people have added their names to the list. Is it something absolutely new that you wish to say?
No, it's a clarification, but not absolutely new. I, I wanted to clarify from Dr. Bishaglia that um, that regardless of whether this amendment is made or not, the work will look identical in either situation, is that correct?
Through your chair, um, we operationalize the work alongside the Human Rights and Equity Department and the Indigenous Rights and Education Department, those are the two departments that support um, the two priority areas in the Malteer Strategic Plan. Uh, and we support students who are Arabic, we support students who identify as Muslim and we support students who are Palestinian. So yes, we would, the work would entail uh, reaching out to those communities. I will also mention that um, you know, one learning that I had uh, in speaking with students back in 2021, when the Student Voice report was done on the anti-black racism, is that when we use terms like all, the all becomes so generic and so general that it becomes nobody. It's hard to see the all. And so for communities that feel silenced and that feel unseen, they might not necessarily see themselves in the all. And so it's helpful to build trust with those communities by using terms that they themselves have asked us to use. Um, to let them know it's an olive branch, to let them know that we see them, we respect them and we're there for them. So just another piece of information as you continue in your discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I just, I just want to say that um, this report is not centered on racism alone. We have many forms of hate. Sexism, misogyny, ageism, ableism, socioeconomic status, LGBTQ plus. There are many forms of hate and discrimination, and this report will report on all of those. But by highlighting these three groups, we elevate Palestinian culture and heritage to a place that is equivalent to that of Jewish culture and tradition and history. And that is what the community is asking for here, and I think it's extremely important that we do that. And I will be supporting this motion. Now trustee Ahmed. Trustee Ahmed, you may have the last word.
Uh, thank you, Chair, through you, and thank you to everyone who's supporting tonight and also um, the communities looking at us, looking up to us actually, to support them. And I'll just give one analogy, maybe a, I don't know how appropriate it is, that if our finger is cut, we don't apply bandage to the entire body. We just address that wound that is on the finger. So that's what we are doing. A section of our community, section of our society is hurting, we are addressing their hurt. So it's not going to take away the pain from other people. Whenever anybody is going to approach us, we are here to listen to them, address their hurt, and we're going to take swift action. That's why, that's why we are here. So uh, doing the work for APR and anti Arab racism and Islamophobia is not going to diminish other people's sufferings or anything. Whoever approaches us, we're going to give them our time and we're going to take swift action. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, trustee Ahmed. We will now vote on the amendment, this is not the main motion, this is the amendment.
So point of clarification, please, is the amendment adding the bolded?
Yes, the amendment is, is the bolded phrasing. Can we separate the two, please? Yes, we can. So that means it'll be two votes. Okay? So the amended motion is only the first part, not the date. And then we will vote again on the second part.
Point of clarification?
Yes.
We're voting on what is on the board, two separate motions. In case it fails, we then vote on the original wording, correct? All right, thank you.
Okay, just have to give manager Khan a minute. Yep. And at this time, Dr. Bishaglia, I would just like to thank you so much for being here this evening and providing us with so much relevant information so that we can make informed decision, thank you. Please cast your votes. Trustee Amos and trustee Daniele. And trustee Daniele.
My apologies, I'm hitting the vote button and nothing's working, I'm trying to vote yes.
Oh, okay, there we go. And that vote does pass, but not unanimously, voting yes, trustee Amos, trustee Daniele, trustee Ahmed, trustee Bryden, trustee Vice Chair Oliver and myself, voting no, trustee Zhang, trustee Gray, trustee Shuttleworth, trustee Baxter and trustee Rocha. Now we will vote on the date change. Please cast your votes. Trustee Zhang. Thank you, that passes unanimously. Now we will vote on the entire motion. Which includes all of the language that we just changed, okay? Does anyone need me to read it? Okay, setting the topic, please cast your votes. Okay, that passed, but not unanimously, we had uh, one trustee, trustee Zhang, voting against. Thank you very much. So that motion passes. Thank you for uh, coming this evening and, and um, letting you, your voices be heard. Thank you. We'll now move on to the next item on our agenda. CEAC membership report submitted by superintendent Rudek. Be it resolved, the Board of Trustees approved the recommended appointment of Sierra Kernick, replacing the current member Nadina Torek as the HDSB CEAC representative for Community Living Burlington. Trustee Baxter, would you make this motion? Yes, please. Trustee Ahmed, would you second this motion?
I do second it, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, superintendent Rudek, would you like to speak to your report?
Thank you, good evening trustees, uh, the report's before you and I'm happy to take any questions.
Is there any debate? Seeing none, please cast your votes. As soon as I get it. What happened to the order of everything, it's all messed up. There we go, got it. Just the order of everything is weird. Okay. There we go, cast your votes. Thank you, that passed unanimously. Now I would like to invite manager um, Tebow to the microphone to speak to us about report four point one point three, South Milton and Milton Southeast, number thirteen. 4.1.3, South Milton and Milton Southeast, Number 13 Public School Boundary Review Study, Report 24158. And please note that this report has been modified since its first appearance in our agenda on December 3rd. I will now read the motion, and it is long, so bear with me. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board implement Option 6A and establish new boundaries for all affected schools within the South Milton and Milton Southeast, Number 13 Public School Boundary Review Study area, for the English program and French immersion programs as described in Board Report 24158 and Appendix D, implementation dates subject to the opening dates of Milton Southeast, Number 13 Public School. That the Halton District School Board implement effective immediately the boundaries for Tiger Jeet Singh Public Schools, specifically Zones 4, 5, and 6, whereby new students between grades K to 7, enrolling after January 7, 2025, be directed to Tiger Jeet Singh Public School in accordance with Option 6A as described in Board Report 24158 and Appendix D. That the Halton District School Board grant students currently attending affected French immersion zones within the Viola Desmond Public School and Irma Colson Public School as of June 30, 2025, and who are impacted by the boundary changes, legacy exemptions to graduate at their current school, in accordance with Option 6A as described in Board Report 24158 and Appendix D. That the Halton District School Board permit older siblings in French immersion at Viola Desmond and Irma Colson Public School, who have been given legacy exemption to have the opportunity to attend the new French immersion program school alongside their younger siblings who are being redirected in accordance with Option 6A as described in Board Report 24158 and Appendix D. That the Halton District School Board grant students currently attending the English program at Viola Desmond Public School located in Zone 12, as of June 30, 2025, legacy exemptions to graduate at their current school in accordance with Option 6A as described in Board Report 24158 and Appendix D. That the Halton District School Board grant students that attended the English programs at Cedar Ridge Public School up to January 7, 2025, located in Zones 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, and M I L T 13, legacy exemptions to graduate at their current school in accordance with Option 6A as described in Board Report 24158 and Appendix D. That the Halton District School Board implement effective immediately the holding boundaries for Milton Number 13 Public School, specifically Zones 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, and M I L T 13, and the addition of Zone 17 to Hawthorne Village Public School, whereby new students enrolling after January 7, 2025, be directed to Hawthorne Village Public School with transportation in accordance with Option 6A as described in Board Report 24158 and Appendix D. That the Halton District School Board grant transportation to legacy exempted students in accordance with Option 6A as described in Board Report 24158 and Appendix D. And that the Halton District School Board establishes to be determined areas for Zone 18 and the Milton Education Village Zones 25 and 26, which will be reviewed at a later date prior to the occupation of new development. Trustee Ahmed, would you move this motion?
Yes, please.
Trustee Daniele, would you second this motion?
Thank you, yes, I will.
General Manager Thibault, would you like to speak to this report while I drink a lot of water?
Let's hear you, ma'am chair, I can stall on your behalf just to allow you to rehydrate. Apologies for the long motion. There are a number of moving parts in this boundary view, as you can attest. So with all that, we did make a number of changes within the report since it was last presented in December 3rd, as first information. I would say that the intent and the outcomes are the same, it's just we want to provide further clarification upon second read and just reviewing it. Some of the questions we're looking at, as we're looking at different permutations as to who's going where, we figured, why not just further clarify everything, because there are a lot of moving parts, and further expand on Appendix D2, just to provide additional details, especially as we're going through these transition areas. So there were some additional improvements that were made to the report, just that it's clear, and that once the, the community was made aware, which we did notify them again of the availability of the report this past Friday, just so that they were aware, just to keep things as clear as possible. So with that, I won't go into too great details. Again, I just wanted to also thank Michelle Daguar, our senior planner, that was a key lead in developing a lot of these options this evening as well, which will assist me in answering any potential questions that you may have. And again, I'll be remiss to not again thank our boundary review committee comprised of our parent community members, as well as our senior staff and our trustees. You know, like I said, a number of nights were spent going through these, these meetings and going through these options and all of the details. And we're really thankful that it brought us to this point here. And again, we want to thank the community for their participation in informing our final recommendation before you this evening. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, General Manager Thibault. And the lack of delegates to this report this evening is awe-inspiring. It speaks to the quality of the work done and to the, the clarity of the motions. Is there any debate?
Maybe just quickly, I forgot to add one thing. There was a little piece of mapping that we want to fix, and that's in relation to the TBD Area 18. Sorry, forgot to mention that part. We just noticed that it kind of blends a little bit further south of Britannia, more than it needs to, so we're just going to tuck that back in to only encompass the McCann lands that are north of Britannia. The Southlands are more of just rural existing houses, those may be part of the Britannia secondary plan expansion, but at least there's more of a definitive plan there, whereas the McCann lands there is not. So we'll just tuck that in a line with Britannia. That line was more for address mapping for our school locator, so now just get that fixed. So I just want to notify and clarify that piece as well.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Trustee Gray?
Thank you very much. Over the holiday, I had a chance to look at this report, and I had the chance to share a little bit of it with some, some of my family members and saying, well, this is happening and that's happening, and then they got to weigh this in, they got to weigh that in. And the, the more I talked, the more I became so filled with gratitude for the folks that we have in our planning department, because as you have rightfully suggested today, there's a lot of moving parts in this, right, right with the French immersion phasing out to students and siblings wanting grandfathering in and so on and so forth. And so looking at that long-range LTAP with all of these moving parts over not just one year, but always stretched out, I think, to 2027, I think it makes for the most, probably the most complex boundary review I have ever had the chance to read in my whole 11 years as a trustee. So I just wanted to compliment the department and express a great deal of gratitude. I'm particularly pleased with the, the parents, too, in their identification of what was important to them, that this plan matches with what was important to the parents in that community. So thank you very much.
And Trustee Ahmed?
Yeah, through you, Chair. Thank you very much. I have been, this was my first boundary review, and I've seen the work that, that you and we both put in, and Michelle and Fred, thank you so much. And the late evenings, the explanations, repeated explanations, I'm, I'm really thankful and amazed by the, by the work put in. Thank you.
And Trustee Daniele?
I would just echo my colleague's comments. Trustee Navid, it was an absolute pleasure to work on this with you, but so much of the pleasure is the ability to just sit back and watch what Fred and Michelle and Mitch are able to do, along with two outstanding superintendents, Dean Barnes and Jen Fowler. The work on this was, it was intricate, it was sometimes difficult, and it was a lot, a lot of work. So I just want to say thank you to all the parent representatives that were on it, as well, my fellow trustee, but especially the R2 superintendents, Dean Barnes and Jen Fowler, and Fred, Michelle, and Mitch. Just incredible work, as always, thank you.
Thank you. And final word to Trustee Ahmed.
Yeah, thank you. I, I forgot, Trustee Daniele. Yes, thank you very much for, for giving me all the brief and, and, and teaching me how the boundary review is conducted and, and like bringing me up to the speed. And also, I forgot Superintendent Barnes. So thank you very much to everyone.
Thank you. So seeing no further speakers, I'll ask you to cast your votes as soon as I can find the topic, because they're not in order tonight. Please cast your votes. Thank God you didn't. And that passes unanimously. Thank you so much for all of your hard work, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
We are now up to Section 5.0, Communication to the Board. And under Items for Information, we have the 2024-2025 Revised Budget Estimates, Report 25006, submitted by Superintendent Nagoy. Superintendent Nagoy, would you like to speak to this report?
Thank you, and for the Chair, to all trustees, this is an information report in front of you this evening, because the revised budget is within the same parameters of the approved budget that was passed by the Board and the Ministry in June, which means we have a $1.8 million deficit budget for one-time items that are outlined in Appendix G in the in-year elimination plan. I did want to mention that although we are still within about $6,000 of the approved budget, both revenues and expenses are $32.4 million more than what was budgeted, and that is mainly as a result of the additional revenue and expenses for retro payments related to labor agreements. Further, we are looking at a lower enrollment of about 693 students than what was anticipated, which is in line with what we've seen at the year-end. And to follow that, you will see that the staffing has been adjusted to reflect a decrease in instructional staff that are related to class size adjustments, which is based on how we do staffing planning. We do not release staff until students are in the classroom, and therefore, we, we keep holdback positions that are never assigned unless the enrollment is realized. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions, trustees may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for this report? Trustee Bryden?
Thank you. And in, in regards specifically to the question about enrollment, I, I cobbled together some numbers and, and took a look between our board and our co-terminus board. Over the last 20 years, we've seen a, a growing share of Halton students going to HDSB schools, in particularly in the elementary panel, and, and in the last couple of years, that's, that's holding steady. In the, in the secondary panel, we saw small growth over the last 20 years, but in the last two years, that's reversed, and we've, we've seen decline, not just in absolute numbers, which our co-terminus board is also dealing with, but in relative numbers. And I just wondered if your department is digging in at all to the, the division by municipality or by grade level to see if there's any trend there that we're picking up? Is this just because, I haven't, sorry, not up to speed. If there's a new Catholic high school opening up, that can drive this trend? Like what's, what's going on? What, do we know anything about what's causing this little reversal?
Trustee Nagoy, or Superintendent Nagoy, go ahead.
All right. So, so I, I will start, and perhaps Associate Director Salmini, the director, as well, can chime in. We do have a committee that is looking this year at retention rates by school, by area, and understanding, with helps from principals, to, to gather information of the decisions that our students are making when choosing their high school, what is important to them, and so forth. I don't have all the data to answer that question fully, but we do know that students are choosing programming, they're choosing a high school based on location, whether they can walk to school, or if it's further away, whether they are bussed to school. Certainly, opening a new high school in their area is going to be a bit of a redistribution of students when that happens, which is what happened in Milton recently, and looking at programming and so forth. So I don't believe we have a full answer to your question tonight, Trustee Bryden, but we are looking in more depth in order to come up with some additional strategies as we move forward. And I'll pass it on to, I, I see Associate Director Salmini came on camera as well.
Yes, good evening. In 2019, I believe, there was an extensive study done and a lot of recommendations made. Upon reviewing those recommendations, there's still many that we can action, and so we have a staff group looking at that this year to look at what, what has been done, what can we still do from that previous large body of work? And I believe that with COVID, a lot of those recommendations were, were not fully explored, and so that, that is the work of, of the group that is coming. And we can certainly share more later in the school year.
Thank you for your response. I believe that satisfies Trustee Bryden's question. And seeing no other speakers on the report, thank you very much, Superintendent Nagoy, for your report. We will now move on to the Director's Report.
Thank you very much, Chair Collard, and good evening once again, everyone. I start this evening Director's Report with a bit of a sad news. We lost a few members of our Halton District School Board community, and so we want to remember them this evening. Adam Malki, a grade 12 student in Milton District High School, was a lovely young man who made people around him feel included, encouraged younger students to get involved, and was very well-liked by his peers and school staff. Adam has been remembered for his warm and inspirational personality, as well as his commitment to family and friends. Our thoughts are with Adam's family and friends and the entire Milton District School community. We also lost Zakaria Barakader, was a grade 12 student at White Oak Secondary School. Zakaria was known for his hard-working nature and positive attitude. He was highly regarded by his peers and teachers. He contributed to the school community by working in the cafeteria and the greenhouse, and he was committed to his studies. Zakaria will be deeply missed. Our thoughts are with his family and friends and the entire White Oak School community. We also take time to remember Megan Dougherty, was a beloved teacher at Hawthorne Village Public School. Megan joined the Halton District School Board as a core French teacher in 2015. She was well-respected by her colleagues, loved by her students, and found so much joy in teaching, mentoring, and coaching extracurricular activities. Megan will be deeply missed by her former and current students, and our thoughts are with her family and friends and the entire Hawthorne Village School community. If you would join me in a moment of silence for those members of our community whom we Thank you. I'd like to take this opportunity also to thank the communication and engagement team for the great work that they did in the multi-year strategic plan promotional video, which has been released. I was, I am proud to highlight the recent release of that video and the key accomplishments of the Halton District School Board. This five-minute video features Chair Collard and myself, which effectively communicates the vision and the core commitments of our new strategic plan. Filmed at both elementary and secondary schools, this video reflects the voice of our students, staff, and families, and showcases our dedication to creating inclusive, engaging, and supportive learning environments. This engage-in resource serves not only as a communication tool, but also as a testament to our commitment to transparency and collaboration with the HDSB community. The positive reception of the video underscores its effectiveness in connecting with stakeholders and illustrating our vision for a brighter, more inclusive future. Also want to bring to your attention our budget development process and public information sessions. Would like to draw your attention to the fact that we are hosting a virtual that we are hosting a virtual public information session on Monday, January 20 at 7:00 PM. And also, we will be holding a public information session on Monday, January 13. So that would be to collect feedback. And so questions on our budget, you can submit questions at the link that will be provided. So following the January 20 public information session, a survey will be available for our public feedback. So we ask members of the public to mark their calendars and to show up and join us virtually for these sessions. We ask for your feedback. And that concludes the director's report for today. I'm happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions for Director Ennis this evening? Seeing none, thank you very much for your report, Director Ennis. And we will now move on to communications from the chair. Each month, I have decided to highlight one of the commitments of our multi-year strategic plan, its ties to the Education Act and how the work of trustees supports it. This month, I would like to highlight kindness, community, and connection. Section 0.1 of the Education Act specifies the purpose of education as follows. A strong public education system is the foundation of a prosperous, caring, and civil society. And that the purpose of education is to provide students with the opportunity to realize their potential and develop into highly skilled, knowledgeable, caring citizens who contribute to their society. Caring is defined as the feeling or showing of concern for or kindness to others. Kindness goes much deeper than simply being nice. As trustees, we have a responsibility to model kindness in our daily interactions with students, parents, staff, at this board table, and in our communities. Our connection to our communities we serve is embedded in Section 218 of the Education Act, which states that a member of a board shall consult with parents, students, and supporters of the board on the board's multi-year plan and bring concerns of parents, students, and supporters of the board to the attention of the board. Trustees go above and beyond the Education Act in this regard. We have a tradition of engaging the public and maintaining strong community ties by hosting and attending events such as super councils and information sessions and providing information on the HDSB website. We proudly represent Halton in our advocacy efforts and with our active participation on committees of the board. Kindness, community, and connection are integral to the work we do every single day. Intentionally embedding kindness in our multi-year strategic plan demonstrates its importance in all aspects of our work. Brings us up to item 5.4, Committee Updates. And we will start with our statutory committees. 5.4.1.1, Parent Involvement Committee. Trustee Sheng, would you please give us a report on the most recent PIC meeting?
Okay, so we have, this is a new PIC committee, and we have new members. And this is the time we have, we are very excited to announce we have, we will have this year Parent Involvement Committee Conference very soon in, it is scheduled for Saturday, February 8. So we will have, so at this time, we will invite, school board will send out the emails for parents to register to this event. And we also invited the committee members, organizations. And last time, in the SEAC meeting, we heard some SEAC organizations want to join the meeting to present, have a table to be there. Also, we invite the organizations and trustees. If you have any topic you want to present, we have workshop. This is a time to invite, we can introduce our school board business or the procedures and how to do the business to the parents. And also, we have committee organizations, several committee organizations, they said they are interested to present in this, in the conference. So this is a time for registration. So for our committee members and trustees, everyone who wants to do the workshop, please contact us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee Sheng. 5.4.1.2, Special Education Advisory Committee, trustees Baxter and Ahmed.
Thank you through the chair. So SEAC meetings, just as a reminder, are live-streamed, recorded, and posted on the board website for anyone who wants to watch a meeting. Each meeting, there is at least one staff presentation on a topic related to special education, and requests for advisory input are brought to the committee as required. In November, feedback was sought from SEAC on the Student Dress Code and Code of Conduct, as they are both undergoing review currently. Last month's presentations, staff presentations, were on student mental health and well-being instruction in classrooms, as well as another presentation on supporting challenging behaviors, a support plan to build educator confidence and capacity. The committee also said thank you to our fantastic outgoing chair, Alison Brendel, who has served in the role also during the last term of this board and will be greatly missed. A new chair will be elected at this month's meeting. In preparation for the upcoming work of reviewing the special education plan for next year, the committee is currently reviewing some of the ministry standards for special education plans. And the next meeting is scheduled for January 22. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now for our staff-led committees, the Accessibility Committee, and back to trustee Baxter.
Okay, me again through the chair. So just briefly, if anyone's unaware of what the Accessibility Committee is, it supports the board's compliance with the Accessibility for Ontarians with Disabilities Act, otherwise known as AODA. It's comprised of representatives of many departments of the board, including facilities, special education, human resources, library services, and other advocacy groups, and SEAC. Just a personal comment, it is a privilege to sit on this committee and have a window into the cooperative work that staff from various areas do to further our goals around true inclusion for all students and staff. I find every meeting to be really inspiring. The committee coordinates departmental accessibility plans and the annual accessibility status report, which is a monitoring report for the multi-year accessibility plan. And this will be presented to and reviewed at SEAC and then will be coming to us at board in February. Most meetings are now held virtually in the spirit of accessibility, with one meeting per person, or per year, sorry, planned with the aim to meet at a board property where committee members can see and learn about an accessibility retrofit in some of our older buildings or a focus on accessibility in the case of a new building. And those meetings are always great, so I look forward to those. And our next meeting is February 6. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that update. The Environmental Leadership and Sustainability Committee, trustee Roshah.
Through you, Chair. My report will not be as fulsome as trustee Baxter's. Since striking committee, the committee has not met. But the next meeting is scheduled for February 11. So I will be happy to bring a more fulsome report in March. Thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee Roshah. The Human Rights Equity Advisory Committee, trustees Ahmed and Baxter.
Sorry, me again through the chair. REAC, as we call it, met in September and November of this year so far. Similar to SEAC, it is an advisory committee. And staff sought feedback this year on the Student Dress Code and the Code of Conduct, which I mentioned before, both undergoing review. And the next meeting is March 25. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The School Year Calendar, trustees Roshah and Shuttleworth.
We just met today, and a report will be coming to boards shortly.
Perfect. Thank you. And the last staff-led committee, Student Mental Health and Wellbeing, Vice Chair Oliver.
The Mental Health Advisory Committee has a new lead, Stephanie Wallace, since the retirement of Michelle Bates. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank Michelle Bates for her years of service and dedication to the, to students and staff of HDSB, all the work that she's done along with her team in promoting and supporting the well-being of our students and staff. So thank you very much, Michelle. The new Mental Health Advisory Committee under leadership of Stephanie has not yet met. As she's just done due to her role, those dates are being set. And I'll be able to provide an update once we have a meeting. The Student Mental Health Committee under leadership of Luisa Botallo, whom you might recall was a huge supporter of the Student Senate. That committee has been quite busy under leadership also from our student trustees in looking at the feasibility for mental health days to be implemented and supported across the system in the secondary school. So that committee is busy at work, looking at connecting with principals about, you know, sussing out how could this work and what would they require to make the mental health days sustainable in our school system. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Now moving on to the OPSPA update, trustees Gray and Daniele. Do you have anything to report this month?
Leave that to trustee Daniele.
Welcome. Thank you. Just a reminder that the Public Education Symposium is quickly coming up. It looks like a very packed agenda. It is on a Friday and Saturday this year. Registration is still open. And I would also encourage any trustees that are attending to know that there will be a regional meeting of Central West on Saturday. It is a lunch meeting, a lunch and learn. So it should be a very robust chance to be able to sit with trustees from around our region and discuss common issues, common solutions, what we're all experiencing. So if you haven't already registered, registration is still open, and I really hope to see you there.
Thank you very much, trustees Gray and Daniele. We are now up to trustee questions of clarification. Do we have any questions of clarification this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to trustee news. Are there any announcements this evening? Seeing none, we can head into private session. Trustee Bryden, would you make a motion to go into committee of the whole private session respecting property, security, personnel, personnel matters? This meeting is not open to the public pursuant to the Education Act 2072.
I would.
Thank you. And trustee Shuttleworth, would you second this motion?
Sure.
Thank you. Are there any objections to moving into private session? Seeing none, this motion is passed by unanimous consent, and we are now in private session. Vice Chair Oliver, the floor is yours.
Good evening, and welcome to the Committee of the Whole Private Session for January 7, 2025. Happy New Year to everyone. I hope you had lovely holidays.
Thank you, and welcome back to public session. We have, I believe, no business to ratify from private?
That is correct, nothing to ratify.
Thank you, and so that means that our agenda is exhausted and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, good night.